Welcome to About Mansfield. It is your audio newspaper. I'm Steve Casio broadcasting from the So Mark Studios along with the About Mansfield news team. Colleen Daniel, she's out there in Studio West. This is the April 9th, 2025, 266th edition. Coming up today, it's Mansfield news, talk and information.
And a little later in the episode, you will have a chance to win a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice with our Mansfield trivia question courtesy of Joe Jenkins Insurance.
Let's take a look at the stories we're covering this week. Assistant Police Chief retires after 34 years of service.
Feathered families find funny homes in Mansfield.
State agency urges safety as warm weather draws Mansfield residents to nearby lakes.
Free egg giveaway set for Saturday.
And in sports, the focus turns to the offensive line.
And in the talk segment, Steve shares his interview with Mansfield ISD School Board candidate Anna Alicia Horn. We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk and information. This is About Mansfield.
Hey there, it's Luke from Cool Hand Electric. Are you tired of dealing with plugs or lights that just won't cooperate? Well, don't fret. Give us a call. Worried about power outages or surges damaging your precious electronics? We've got you covered. Whether it's a whole house generator or surge protection, our solution oriented Cool Hands are ready to tailor the perfect option that suits your needs and budget. At Cool Hand Electric, excellence is still cool.
Are you ready to create unforgettable memories? Picture this, an enchanting event venue nestled amidst breathtaking landscapes with panoramic views right here in Mansfield. The Grand View Event Center is the perfect setting to bring your vision to life. From intimate gatherings to large scale extravaganzas, the Grand View has flexible spaces to accommodate any occasion, be it a graduation or school function, art exhibition, or birthday or anniversary party. Book your next unforgettable experience at thegrandviewmansfield.com. That's thegrandviewmansfield.com. The Grand View Event Center, where memories are made and dreams become reality. Book your event today.
I'm Mansfield Police Chief Tracy Aaron, and you are listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield. This portion of the news is brought to you by the Grand View Event Venue in Mansfield. The Mansfield Police Department has announced the retirement of Assistant Chief Gary Fowler after 34 years of service. Chief Fowler began his career with the department in 1991 and has held every rank within the organization, including a seven year term as Chief of Police. During his time with MPD, Fowler contributed to several major projects, including the development of the department's gun range and the addition of its first dispatch center. In 2014, he transitioned into the role of Assistant Chief, where he has worked alongside Chief Tracy Aaron for the past 11 years. Fowler has been recognized for his work in staff development, operations and mentoring within the department. His retirement marks the end of a long career in local law enforcement.
It's nesting season in Mansfield, and local birds are starting their families in some rather unusual places. For example, in Chandler Park and along the Walnut Creek Linear Trail, at least three of the dog waste stations have been mistaken by birds as ideal nesting spots. Officials are asking parkgoers to avoid these specific dispensers and give the birds some space. Even minor disturbances can lead to abandoned nests, so extra care is needed, especially around children and pets. There are still plenty of waste stations available for dog walkers, but for now, protecting these fragile bird families is a top priority.
And you know, Colleen, the weather is finally warming up, and that means more and more Mansfield residents will be heading to area lakes and rivers this spring. State officials are urging paddlers to keep safety top of mind. The Texas Park and Wildlife Department says preparation is key for anyone kayaking, canoeing, or paddle boarding. Officials recommend wearing a properly fitted life jacket, checking the weather and water conditions, and carrying a whistle or sound producing device for emergencies. State law requires all paddlers to have a U.S. Coast Guard approved life jacket onboard. Children under 13 must wear one while on the water at all times. Authorities say recent paddling accidents, particularly in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, underscore the importance of caution. Many incidents have involved sudden weather changes, strong currents, or hidden obstacles. Boating safety experts recommend paddling in groups when possible, avoiding alcohol, and sharing a float plan with someone on land if paddling after sunset, a white light is required. Staying hydrated and protecting against the sun are also advised as the temperature rises. For more safety tips, visit the Texas Parks and Wildlife website attpwd.texas.gov.
The cost of eggs is still at an all time high, and to help ease the pain at the grocery store, one Tarrant County Commissioner is stepping up to help. Tarrant County residents in need can pick up free cartons of eggs at two giveaway events this Saturday, April 12th. The events are being held with support from the Tarrant Area Food Bank and North Texas Area Community Health Centers. The first giveaway takes place from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Cornerstone Baptist Church in Arlington. A second event will run from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Grapevine Relief and Community Exchange, or Grace in Grapevine. A total of 2,000 cartons of eggs will be distributed on a first come, first served basis, rain or shine. The initiative is being organized by Precinct 2 County Commissioner Alyssa Simmons.
An offensive lineman makes the spotlight. We'll talk about it because sports is next.
I'm Philip Washington, Chief Investment Officer of Stone Hill Wealth Management and host of the Wealth Building Made Simple podcast. First book I read in college was Rich Dad, Poor Dad, and it changed my life. And since then, I've read tons and tons of books on money. And what I've done is taken those lessons, simplified them, and I talk about those lessons on my podcast, Wealth Building Made Simple. So come hang out with us. We're on every major platform, Apple Podcasts, Spotify, and on YouTube. Wealth Building Made Simple.
Hey, it's Steve Casio, and are you ready to make your voice heard? Want to bring out your ideas to life through captivating conversations and engaging visuals? Look no further than Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio, your one stop destination for award winning audio and video podcast recording. Equipped with cutting edge microphones, crystal clear audio recording, and high definition cameras, we're here to turn your ideas into engrossing content. But it's not just about the equipment. We're dedicated to bringing out the best in your content. Whether you're a seasoned pro or just starting out, we're here to elevate your podcasting game. We'll even help you with intro music, transitions, voiceover, and that professional polish that sets your podcast apart. So whether you're into interviews, storytelling, or simply sharing your expertise, Podcast Mansfield can help bring your podcasting dreams to life. Visit PodcastMansfield.com. Podcast Mansfield, where creating your podcast masterpiece has never been easier.
At Methodist Mansfield Medical Center, we've been caring for our home team for over 15 years. Today you'll find award winning physicians on the medical staff, advanced neurosurgery, a Level Three Trauma Center, critical care for newborns, and comprehensive orthopedic care. Methodist Mansfield, delivering the care our friends, neighbors, and home team depend on. That's community, and why so many people trust Methodist.
In sports, when it comes to football, the spotlight usually shines the brightest on the quarterback, the wide receivers, the running back, you know, the flashy playmakers who light up the scoreboard. But today, the spotlight shifts to the trenches. Standing tall, literally, at six foot seven and 274 pounds, meet Felix Ojo, a junior at Lakewood High School and a top tier offensive tackle in the class of 2026. The website MaxPreps ranks Ojo among the top 100 players in the country, while 247 Sports takes it even further, calling him the number seven overall prospect in his class. And yes, the offers are rolling in. According to 247 Sports, over 50 schools have already made offers. Baylor was the first to jump in back in November of 2023. Ojo's top contenders are said to be the Texas Longhorns, Oklahoma, Ole Miss, the Ohio State, and Michigan. And how valuable is this high school junior? On3.com, which is a site that tracks NIL value, estimates Ojo's name, image, and likeness worth at $800,000. That's not far from the top prospect in the country. That's Jackson Cantwell, an O lineman out of Missouri who's valued at $1.1 million. Keep in mind that these are still high school athletes. Scouting analyst Gabe Brooks for 247 Sports says Ojo is, quote, "a tall athletic tackle with great movement, a lean build, and elite upside." He adds that Felix looks like he's one of the top offensive tackles in the 2026 class with the tools to become a multi-year college starter and a future pro. The high school season kicks off in five months, but you can bet we'll be watching Felix Ojo every step of the way. And that is a look at sports. Election season is here, and if you're a voter in Mansfield, it's time to do your homework and learn about the candidates running for city council and school board before casting your vote. Leadership is more than a popularity contest. Attending a local forum is crucial because these leaders make decisions that directly affect your life, from education of your kids and grandkids, to public safety, housing, and infrastructure, and so on. Forums give you the chance to hear candidates' positions, ask questions, and hold them accountable. An informed vote ensures your voice was heard and that your community reflects your needs. Your participation can truly shape the future of your community. But a forum only matters if all of the candidates show up. When candidates engage with voters, it shows they're willing to be transparent, accountable, and responsive to the community's needs. It also allows them to hear directly from residents and refine their platforms based on real concerns. Showing up signals respect for the democratic process and a commitment to serving the public. But when a candidate skips these opportunities, now that's a red flag. It could mean they're not prepared, they're avoiding scrutiny, or they're trying to control their message through social media instead of facing tough questions. Dodging a forum isn't just a scheduling conflict. It's a statement. It says, "I don't have to answer to you." Local forums and media interviews are some of the few chances voters have to see and hear candidates unscripted, to hear how they think on their feet and handle complex issues. If a candidate isn't willing to engage now, what makes you think they'll listen once elected? Accountability starts before the election, not after. So as you fill out your ballot this spring, pay attention to who's showing up, and more importantly, who's not. That's my opinion. What's yours? If you have a comment about the show, the news, whatever's on your mind, locally, the good, the bad, the ugly, doesn't matter, you can reach us by voicemail at 817-435-2938. Think of it as your audio letter to the editor. That voicemail number again, 817-435-2938. And of course, we are in election season right now. Our city council and school board candidate interviews are now available on the About Mansfield website. Visit AboutMansfield.com and spend 30 minutes with each of the candidates or the candidates who granted an interview. Again, go to AboutMansfield.com, right there at the top of the page, click on the interviews link. This coming Saturday, April 12th, is National Grilled Cheese Sandwich Day, a time to celebrate the simple comfort of toasted bread and melted cheese. While its exact origin is unclear, this food holiday likely began in the 1990s, but the sandwich itself has a rich history. During the Great Depression, open faced cheese dreams were a budget friendly favorite. By World War II, U.S. Navy cooks were serving broiled cheese sandwiches from military cookbooks. The term grilled cheese did not catch on until the 1960s. Before that, it went by names like toasted cheese or cheese dream. Celebrations today range from crafting gourmet variations at home to visiting local diners or even hosting grilled cheese parties. Here's some food for thought. The largest grilled cheese sandwich ever made weighed in at over 400 pounds. So on April 12th, go ahead, grab some bread, melt your favorite cheese, and enjoy a grilled cheese sandwich. Or as we call it in my home, white bread quesadilla.
Coming up after the break, we turn the page to the features section.
I'm Angel Beasadi, and today we're talking about one of the most fundamental, yet often overlooked, aspects of our health. Sit back and let's dive into the importance of staying hydrated.
In this week's Cocktail of the Week, imagine wandering through the sun drenched lavender fields of Provence.
We are Mansfield's only source for news, talk, and information. I'm Colleen Daniel, and this is About Mansfield.
This portion of the news was brought to you by the Grand View Event Venue in Mansfield.
Hey there, it's Luke from Cool Hand Electric. Are you tired of dealing with plugs or lights that just won't cooperate? Well, don't fret. Give us a call. Worried about power outages or surges damaging your precious electronics? We've got you covered. Whether it's a whole house generator or surge protection, our solution oriented Cool Hands are ready to tailor the perfect option that suits your needs and budget. At Cool Hand Electric, excellence is still cool.
Congratulations to Eldon Vigil, who knew that the Mansfield Chronicle was founded in 1883. When we come back, this week's trivia question. I'm Colleen Daniel, and this is About Mansfield.
Hi, this is Joe Jenkins with Joe Jenkins Farmers Insurance, specializing in auto, home, commercial, and life insurance. I was born and raised here in Mansfield, Texas. We're active in the community in Mansfield, a town we really care about. Our office has over 30 years' experience in the insurance industry, and we're passionate about what we do and about customer service. For a free quote, please visit our website at joejenkinsinsurance.com or give us a call at 817-472-6058. Once again, that website is joejenkinsinsurance.com.
It is time right now for the highly coveted, wildly popular About Mansfield trivia question. If you are the first person to email the correct answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com, you will receive a $25 gift card to a Mansfield restaurant of your choice. It's brought to you by Joe Jenkins Insurance. Whether you're looking for homeowners, auto, commercial, or any other type of insurance, Joe has helped Mansfield area residents understand the insurance coverage that best fit their needs since 2010. You can find him on the internet at joejenkinsinsurance.com. I've mentioned this before, I'll mention it again right now. Not everyone wins on a Wednesday. So if you're hearing this on Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, or whenever, you know what, give it a shot. You may be taking home a $25 restaurant gift card. Colleen, it's your turn.
Well, Steve, one of the longest highways in Texas is U.S. Highway 287, which runs 640 miles from Amarillo through Mansfield and ends in the Gulf Coast city of Beaumont. In 1940, U.S. Highway 287 was changed to that name from another name. This week's trivia question is, what was Highway 287 called prior to its name change in 1940? Email your answer to trivia@aboutmansfield.com. Again, what was Highway 287 called prior to its name change in 1940? Good luck, and thanks to Joe Jenkins Insurance for the gift card.
This is Randall Kennedy, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome back to About Mansfield, your audio newspaper. Let's open up the features section.
Angel Beasadi is here to talk about the importance of staying hydrated in Methodist Mansfield news to know. Angel?
We all know that drinking water is essential, but how often do we stop and think about just how much of an impact it has on our health? Our bodies are made up about 60% water, and every single system in our body depends on it. Water supports everything from regulating your body temperature to helping your joints move smoothly. Without enough water, your body can't function at its best. So why is it so important? Let's break it down. First, water provides energy and focus. How many of us have reached for a cup of coffee or an energy drink when we feel sluggish? What if the solution was as simple as drinking more water? When we're dehydrated, our energy levels drop, and our ability to focus becomes a lot harder. Hydration helps keep our brain sharp and our energy levels steady throughout the day, making it easier to concentrate and stay productive. Let's talk about your digestive health. Drinking water is key for digestion and detoxification. Water helps keep your digestive system running smoothly and prevents constipation. It also flushes out toxins, helping to keep our kidneys and liver functioning properly. When you're hydrated, your body is better at getting rid of water, which in turn supports your overall health. Hydration is great for our skin, too. If you're someone who struggles with dry skin or breakouts, you might want to try increasing your water intake. Hydrated skin is healthier, brighter, and more elastic. So not only will you look better, you'll feel better, too. Keeping your skin well hydrated can help with dryness, acne, and other skin issue. And here's something we all love to hear. Drinking water can help with weight loss. I know it sounds too good to be true, but it's real. Drinking water before meals can help you feel fuller, which means you're less likely to overeat. And staying hydrated can actually speed up your metabolism, so your body can burn calories more efficiently. So if you're trying to shed a few pounds, drinking more water is a simple and effective way to support that goal. Another major benefit of hydration is temperature regulation. When we're hydrated, our bodies are much better at regulating temperature, especially during physical activity or hot weather. Water helps keep our body cool, preventing overheating, and helping us stay comfortable, whether we're working out or just spending time outdoors. So how much water should we drink each day? A good rule of thumb is eight by eight, that's eight ounces of glasses of water, or about two liters, which is roughly half a gallon. This is a simple goal that most people can aim for. However, your needs might vary depending on your activity level, the weather, or your health. So it's important to listen to our body. If you're thirsty, drink. And if you're active or in hot climate, you may need to drink more. Now, you might be wondering, how do I remember to drink enough water? Well, here are a few tips to help you stay hydrated. Carry a reusable water bottle with you everywhere. Drink a glass of water when you wake up in the morning and before every meal. If plain water feels boring, try infusing it with fruits, herbs, or cucumber for added flavor. And a great one, swap sugary sodas or juices for water. Your body will thank you, and you'll cut down on empty calories. So to wrap things up, drinking water is truly the best thing you can do for your body. It supports your energy, digestion, skin health, metabolism, and so much more. By staying hydrated, you're helping your body function at its best. And remember, the next time you're thirsty, don't reach for a sugary drink. Go for a refreshing glass of water instead. Your body will thank you. Stay healthy, stay hydrated, and we'll see you next time. I'm Angel Beasadi, reporting for About Mansfield.
Shaken or stirred, you know it's going to be good, as Brian Certain serves up a drink that will take your imagination to the lavender fields of southeastern France in this week's Cocktail of the Week. Brian?
This week's feature is the Lavender Provence, a cocktail that tells the story of France's deep connection to both lavender and the liqueur production. We're bringing together two of France's most cherished botanical traditions, the lavender fields of Provence and the violet liqueurs of the Alps. Let's talk about the remarkable story behind each ingredient. The Creme de Violet, despite its name, contains no cream at all. The stunning purple liqueur is a staple in pre-prohibition cocktails, particularly the aviation, but disappeared from American bars during prohibition, because everything disappeared from American bars during prohibition. It wasn't until 2007 that this beautiful liqueur made its triumphant return, sparkling a revival for classic violet cocktails. Meanwhile, French lavender has its own rich history. The Robins brought lavender to Provence over 2,000 years ago, believing it could tame lions and tigers and pacify the untamed. I guess that's another name for French people. By the Middle Ages, the herb was so valuable that bundles of lavender could be exchanged for land, livestock, and other significant goods. But as always, don't worry about taking notes as I'm giving the ingredients and instructions. They're always posted on bourbongospel.com. So you need one and a half ounces of French gin, a half ounce of Creme de Violet, three fourths of an ounce of lavender syrup. Hold on, I'll give you the recipe, a half ounce of fresh lemon juice, chilled soda water to top, and then a fresh lavender sprig and lemon twist for garnish. For the lavender syrup, we're going to make a simple syrup and put the Provence lavender in it. So a cup of water, cup of sugar, two tablespoons of a dried Provence lavender, I picked mine up on Amazon, and then steep it like a tea. Don't overdo it. And for this French countryside in a glass, fill the shaker with ice. I think we've heard this before. Add the gin, the Creme de Violet, the homemade lavender syrup, and the lemon juice. You're going to shake gently. We want to preserve those delicate floral notes. Then double strain it to a champagne flute or a coupe glass and top with chilled soda. Then garnish with a lavender sprig and a lemon twist. What are we going to pick up? Well, the first thing we're going to pick up is those bright floral lavender and violet notes. Then on the background, we're going to pick up those botanical gin and the bright citrus. And then finally, the finish is going to be light. It's going to be effervescence with complex floral layers. Fun facts. The color of the Creme de Violet comes from actual violet flowers. Provence produces about 250 metric tons of lavender essential oils every single year. The word lavender comes from the Latin lavare, meaning to wash. French monks used lavender in the medicinal preparations as early as 1371. Traditional violet liqueurs were among the popular French nobles. The finest lavender in the world grows about 2,000 feet of altitude in Provence, France. So pro tips. Source true French lavender if you can for authenticity. Certainly, there are lavender fields here in Texas, and they make a great substitute. Look for a Creme de Violet that's naturally colored. Artificial versions can taste, guess what, artificial. Then store the lavender syrup in a dark bottle to preserve its delicate flavors, much like a bottle you would put olive oil in. Perfect pairings, French macaroons, honey lavender mandalins, or violet scented chocolates. But always, I'm open to hear your take and input. What would you put with this cocktail? You can reach me at brian@bourbongospel.com. And until next week, as Mark Twain said, "Too much of anything is bad, but too much whiskey is barely enough." Reporting for the About Mansfield podcast, I'm Brian Certain.
We're back in 60 seconds with Steve's interview with Mansfield ISD School Board candidate Anna Alicia Horn.
Imagine a city where innovation knows no bounds, where dreams take flight, and the future unfolds before your very eyes. Welcome to Mansfield, a beacon of growth and a testament to vision. In the heart of Mansfield, a remarkable transformation is underway. But it's not just about the physical landscape. It's about the spirit that drives us forward, a spirit of collaboration that bridges cultures, a spirit of entrepreneurship that fuels prosperity, and a spirit of community that binds us as one. Mansfield is more than just a place. It's a canvas where diversity paints the picture of progress. From art festivals that ignite creativity to tech hubs that redefine boundaries, this city celebrates every voice, every passion. Mansfield, where growth knows no limits and the vision is limitless. Brought to you by the unstoppable spirit of the Mansfield Economic Development Corporation.
Hi, I'm Karen Marcucci, and you're listening to About Mansfield.
Welcome to Campaign 2025. If I sound a little stuffy, boy, the sinuses are going nuts today with this storm passing through. We are recording on March 4th. This is a school board interview, and I'm Steve Casio, the co-host. Was not only last year, I'm back again this year. To my right, that would be your left, is Karen Marcucci. Welcome back.
Thank you for inviting me back. I'm thrilled to be here.
And today, school board interview, we are interviewing Place Four candidate Anna Alicia Horn. Welcome to About Mansfield.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. I'm glad to be here.
We're going to start off with something very simple, because we're going to try to ease you into this interview. Give us the little background on who is Anna Alicia and why are you running for school board?
Yeah, before we continue, please feel free to call me Anna. I know, Anna Alicia can be mouthful.
Thank you.
But yeah, I have lived in the district for almost 15 years now. I'm a mom to three daughters in the district. I have one in elementary school, one in intermediate, and one in middle school. They're all in the dual language program, and so we've gotten to go through one of the program of choices. I work for a technology company where I like to say I work for a technology company where I like to say I'm actually over all the people and not the technology. I'm on the executive team there, one of those vague titles, strategic development. So I've done everything from help create a department that didn't exist to just finding different ways that we can make our teams work together and better serve our customers. My background is actually in operations for churches, and I've also worked for a nonprofit that helped resource women and children experiencing homelessness or just other needs like that. I have decided to run for the school board just because I am invested in the district's success long term, because like I said, I do have three girls. I'm here at least another decade and not just this next political cycle. I'm here for the long term, and I am invested in the success of Mansfield ISD.
And we know girl moms are the best.
Girl moms are the best.
Yes, I also have three daughters.
Yes.
And ran for school board for many of the same reasons. So I love hearing that.
I'm not a girl mom. I'm a girl dad. I do have one daughter who is a product of Mansfield ISD.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Karen, would you like to start with the first question?
Yes, I had some questions about what is the current school board doing well that you would like to keep?
I think one of the things that the school board does well is I do know that I see some of them out in the community and at school events a lot. I know I've gotten to meet some of them there and converse with them and just kind of see and understand that part of it and how they interact with us that kind of way. I know a few years ago, how I even kind of got more involved with how the district works was the community conversations that we got to do. And I really appreciated whenever we had those opportunities to really get to have those dialogues with them. I know they do feedback forums now, but I really appreciated those community conversations and being available to us in that way specifically.
So of course, the follow up to that is what are the opportunities for the board to do better? What do you think will be? Why do you think you'll be effective in implementing that change? Or what would you like to see? And how could you make that happen?
Yeah, I think I kind of just alluded to it a little bit. I think over the past year or two, I think things have become a little less transparent and a little bit less, well, I'm just going to say it, things have felt a little bit more divisive within the community. And I feel like maybe trust has been broken between parents and the community with the school board and how decisions are made or how things end up on agendas. And just understanding the topics and the reasons why things go before the board and why things are being voted on. I think we've lost that accountability to the community and to the district of why things are being handled the way that they're being handled.
In your mind, what is the role of a board member? And how do you see yourself fitting into that role?
The thing that really excites me about being on the board is getting to set the, being a part of setting the overall vision. I know Mansfield already has, you know, Vision 2030 set up. But something that I love doing in my day job, any of my day jobs that I've ever had, is making sure we stay accountable to the vision that we set. It's great to be a part of setting overall strategy, overall vision. But I love data. I love follow through. I love inspecting and seeing where we're hitting the mark. And as weird as it sounds, I also love seeing where we're not hitting the mark, because that just is another opportunity for creativity. That's another opportunity to bring in experts and hear what they're saying, hear from the people who are actually having to execute and really move if we need to, because that's another student that we're reaching, that's another educator that we're helping. And so I really think it's the board's job is to keep us focused, make the main thing the main thing, which as a school board trustee is students, right? Every decision we make is at best for the kids. And so I really think, of course, there's the hire and fire superintendent, you know, I don't really see that. Hopefully, that's not coming up on my, on the next round of terms. And then, of course, we're also entrusted with finances and the stewardship of all of the district resources and that kind of thing. And I have been on boards before where we've had to do that, and I'm well prepared to do that. But I'm very excited about really honing in on making sure we're hitting those goals and visions that we set for the district.
So you talked a little bit about students. So students, many of our students can't vote this election, but if they could vote, what do you think the most important issue is to them?
Oh, that's a great question. I think the really, the most important thing for a student, honestly, I think is the most important thing for us as adults, too, is that I think people really want to be seen and understood where they're at and where they're coming from and what their perspective is. I know in a district of over 35,000 kids, that sounds pretty overwhelming, and we're not going to come up with 35,000 individualized plans or concepts. But I think fostering an environment, a safe learning environment where kids feel included, where they feel welcomed, where they feel supportive, I think that sets a foundation where they can learn math, where they can learn science. And so I think a student would say that they want to be in an environment where they feel safe and where they feel heard and where they feel like they matter.
This is exactly, when you mentioned the word safe in that entire answer, you mentioned the word safe twice. My next question was exactly, how do we keep our students safe in schools?
Yeah, I think that's a really big issue in general right now. I know as a mom of three on three different campuses, that is something that I definitely think about. I think there's a couple of ways to do it. I know there's a lot of talk about the security systems on some of the older, or the middle schools and high schools, and I think we're trying to get that right. We're trying to figure out how that works. It does lend its route into funding and having the right resources to be able to enforce some of these mandates that are coming from the state level, but making sure that we have the right funding to actually implement the right safety measures to make sure our campuses are safe. But then I think another way that we can really focus on safety is through the like SEL and mental health and kids feeling supported and feeling like they have a place to process emotions, process what's happening. I think a part that, for those of us that are so lucky to come from homes and families where maybe being safe or being seen or being heard isn't an issue, I think we have to remember that that's not always the case for some of our students. And so school is their safe place. And so really having a place where we can help address those emotional needs, mental needs, so that it keeps the whole classroom environment safe, it keeps the whole campus environment a little bit more safer, too. So I'd love to be able, once again, to have funding we need to maybe put more resources towards social workers on campus or even more counselors on campus, and so that we can be able to develop those resources around that more.
So along those lines, are there any bills in the legislature currently that you have any strong feelings about that may impact education? For instance, vouchers, educational savings accounts, and some of those things that are kind of hot topics right now when it comes to public ed?
Yes, yes, definitely. There is a bill going before the House right now that, it's just the hot button topic right now, right? ESAs, vouchers. I think the one currently going before the House right now that just came out is tying teacher salary increases. There's a little bit stipulations around it. I think at the end of the day, public funds should be for public schools, no matter how you look at it. Tying it to teacher increases and stuff feels like we're playing a game of ransom with our public education dollars. And I, I don't, I don't, this feels like an obvious statement, but I think that we have done a disservice to the public education system in Texas at large. I think we've done a disservice to our teachers, to our educators, to the other staff on campuses that they're in front of our babies day in, day out. They are in, I mean, we all have a teacher, a counselor, even a nurse that like affected our lives, and we're holding their salaries ransom, we're holding some of their retirements possibly ransom. We're holding a lot of things ransom and then turning around and saying, you're not doing good enough. And so now we're going to take these funds and give them to these other entities and not hold them to the same standards that we hold you to. And I just, there's not a scenario where that makes sense. And so I am strongly against any bill, no matter what you call it, no matter who writes it, and no matter what you name it, before the Senate, before the House, before it makes it to the governor's desk, I am wholeheartedly against vouchers and educational savings accounts.
Since Karen brought up the hot topics, I'm going to mention three words and just let you roll with it. Okay. Diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Outside of that being a hot topic, it's kind of funny, because if you ask someone to break it down, what specifically do you have a problem with? Is it diversity? Do you have a problem with equity? Or do you have a problem with inclusivity? Because whenever it becomes such a hot topic, I'm not being, I mean, I know I sound facetious, and maybe I am being a little facetious, but I don't know what we're mad at. I don't know. I, we, Karen and I are in jobs because of equity laws and inclusive laws. I couldn't get a bank account in 1970. Like, we all benefit from that. And like going back to what I was saying earlier, how what I think a student would say is most important to them is what an adult would say is most important to them is that we all want to be in an environment where we feel seen and included and valued. And I think creating and fostering environments where there is that inclusion and there is that equity and there is that diversity is only a win for everyone. To say I'm not for diversity in a district that over 84 languages are spoken, and we have such a huge emerging bilingual population, like, I don't really know what we're trying to accomplish by making that a hot topic, by making that like a buzzword. Of course, we're stronger with our diversity. Of course, we're better for it, because I see it every day in our classrooms. I see it every day at the grocery store. I see it every day in my neighborhood. And so there's not anybody that's going to convince me that it's too political to say that I'm for diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Well, talking about diversity in the schools, it's so interesting to me, because I've thought this for a very long time. I don't believe that there's a single school in Mansfield ISD that actually looks like Mansfield ISD as a whole. And so it is really interesting how much our schools have changed, the makeup of our schools, just talking about the different backgrounds and languages and all of that, and the new neighborhoods, too, all the new schools.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's ever evolving. Yeah.
So I have a few questions about money. That seems to be my topic today. One of the things that I've often looked at and had a lot of questions about are people's top three donors. Because, for instance, when you're talking about vouchers, our governor, his top donor is very pro voucher. So I do believe that that influences his politics a little bit. So if you could share with us a little bit more about who your top three donors are and what impact they may have on you.
Yeah, well, as of right now, I'm running a very grassroots campaign. I'm pretty sure my family members are my biggest donors. If not my family members, then my coworkers. They are all very excited for me that I'm running for school board. I am very lucky to have such a strong support system. I will say I work for a remote company, so some work in Florida and California. And so it might look like they're coming from those states, but as far as I know right now, my largest contributors are coworkers and family.
Do you have any political action committees that are supporting you currently?
As of the recording of this podcast, I have not received any funds from an organization or a PAC or anything like that.
Being a school board member not only takes that few hours a month of being on, of attending school board meetings, but there are trainings and, and you're a mother of three. Question really is, do you have time to be a school board member? And what do you anticipate giving up in your life in order to be able to go to trainings and school board meetings, et cetera?
Yeah, well, I'm super fortunate right now that I do have a remote job. I work from my house. It's super flexible. The position that I have is very flexible. I get to make my own schedule for the most part. I'm also really lucky that my husband works remote, and so he has a very flexible job. We are real partners in how we handle our kids. And I will say, our kids give us a run for their money. If there is something to sign up and try, they are the first ones to sign up the club, the sport, the extracurricular. We are constantly trying to rein them in. But not only that, our family lives close, and so I'm very fortunate to have grandma or aunt or cousin to step in and help there. And so that's just another reason why it felt like a really good reason to run right now, just because my support system is so strong, and I don't really see any hindrances in the time department. All the stuff you mentioned, like I said, I'm a little bit of a nerd in that way. I like digging in. I like researching. I like looking at reports. I like, all of those things are check marks or plus marks for me.
So I was, I was wondering, when you were talking about that, if you and your husband can both work remote, why are you here in Mansfield ISD? My goodness.
That's a great question. So whenever I finished undergrad, my husband and I actually both worked for a church. And we started out in youth ministry, actually. We worked with the sixth through 12th graders. He, and so we worked for churches in South Dallas. We were in Houston for a little bit. And we actually came to Mansfield to work for a church back in 2010. That's where I was the operations director. He was the creative director. And so we ended up here for that. And then when he transitioned on, he's a web engineer, and I went to work for the nonprofit. We were kind of like, well, we don't have to stay in Mansfield necessarily. So should we move? But at the time, his family lived in Fort Worth and mine lived in Red Oak, and so we were in the dead middle. And so we just decided, let's stay here. And of course, what everybody says, the schools. The schools were great. We had our first kid in 2011, and so we were like, why would we leave? We are in a great, we formed a great community by then. And so, yeah, we were like, why are we going to leave now that we have a kid old enough to start schools here? So.
That's why we moved to Mansfield.
Yes, absolutely.
And people ask you, why did you move from San Diego to?
Yeah, California, the beautiful weather.
To Mansfield, but for the schools.
Yeah.
And, you know, because my wife got a killer job. What differentiates you from your opponent?
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier. That's also another reason why I threw my hat in the ring a couple of years ago, when I started getting more involved in community meetings, and I started attending more and more board meetings and being more and more involved with like how things were going. Even last year, I did listen to a few of these podcasts.
Do we do?
Yeah, they were great. They were great. But vouchers and public funding were being brought up even last year, and specifically over the past year. I just feel like there was a lot of opportunities to really advocate for our district and really advocate for our students and to really fill that gap. And I don't believe that my opponent stepped up to the plate in that. In fact, I think she lost a lot of trust with the community. She, we all know she was a part of endorsing a representative who is the cosponsor of the bill Karen and I just talked about, that is set to take funds out of public schools for private endeavors. And not just at a state level, we faced a local issue here in Tarrant County, where they were going to do a reappraisal plan in the fall. And when the districts around us came together to denounce the plan, Mansfield ISD didn't join. And whenever people were writing resolutions to denounce that plan, Mansfield ISD was not a part of it. And I found myself having to go to Arlington ISD's page to learn what was happening with for it. And I found myself going to Kennedale's ISD pages to learn what was happening about it. And then lastly, when it came time to get to vote for TAD's board members, who get to decide on these reappraisal plans that directly affect the funding for our district, my opponent was the lone dissenting vote against a slate of pro-public funding education people for that board. And so eventually, for me, enough was enough. And I think that our community deserves a trustee that they can trust, that they can trust to make every decision with our kids at the center of those decisions. And so that is my, hopefully, my commitment to the community, for those of y'all that have seen me at board meetings.
Well, and if I recall correctly, you've spoken at some board meetings, correct?
Yes, ma'am. All of the things I just mentioned to you, I was at board meetings, talking about these things, raising those issues. I am in, much to maybe my family's chagrin, I'm in newspaper articles. I am in, much to maybe my family's chagrin, I'm in newspaper articles about these issues, trying to bring awareness to what was happening in our district. And so I decided, you know, this is, I tell people this all the time, I'm an only child, and I have three girls. I'm an only child. And there's a little bit, I have this naivety to me of like, we can just fix it. It's really easy, like just fix it. Something's wrong, let's just do something about it. Do something, do something, do something. And so I decided to do something. And so that's why I'm here. That's why I'm running.
Well, just to change things up a little bit, make it a little bit lighter for you, I was just curious, what subject or class is now offered in school that you wish you could have taken when you were in school? Because I get so excited when I walk through the hallways and see all the offers we have.
Oh, my gosh, I can't even, I'm like racing through it. One, the culinary classes at Ben Barber, the fact that they're like winning awards now, they're savvies.
National awards.
Yeah, the national awards, like that is unbelievable. There was a cooking camp even during the summer, Alfred at Legacy, that my daughters have all, they've done it twice. And I mean, at age seven, I remember one time my husband and I woke up and they had made eggs and pancakes from scratch. And I was just like, oh, can a seven-year-old use a stove by herself? But I just was blown away by that. So just the culinary classes. And then also, just because it's cool, the phlebotomy courses that were all just the fact. And like when I was learning about that, I think I read that one of the hospitals donated one of the imaging machines, and so they were able to do like a full body scan and they're able to see how that works. And I just, the biggest thing when I was in school, that was all the rage, and I only took it to get the AP credit to keep my GPA up, was a C++ coding class. Until like everybody else, I made the ball bounce across the screen.
I think you did say you're a nerd. And that just brought out, she's coding computers in C++.
I remember those days. I took a coding class too, and I loved it as well. And mine was, I took one of my mother's cross stitch patterns and I animated it. So it was a little dog that walked across the screen and then went in front of a fire hydrant, and it said, give it all you got.
Wow, that's amazing. I was not at that level.
I love all that kind of stuff too. That's amazing.
That's great.
This was just a random thought that I had. When I grew up, the school that I went to, we were known as the Arrows. That was our mascot. So that got me thinking, if the school board had a mascot, what would it be?
Oh, my goodness, if the school board had a mascot.
And again, there's no bad answers, because we were the Arrows, like legitimately.
What would it be? You know what? This is a funny answer. Well, it's going to be funny to me. I, the high school I graduated from, we were the Hawks. And I was always so annoyed that we weren't the Eagles, because I'm like, a hawk is like, if we could have, if we're picking birds, like the eagle is the most, so I would, I've, when I was in high school, I always wanted to be an eagle. And so I would pick, it's my time. I will be, the board will be an eagle. I've decided. There we go. There we go.
Anna Alicia, if someone wanted more information about you or your campaign, do you have a Facebook page, Instagram, Tinder, website?
I almost said all the above, but the Tinder is going to make me have to not say that. Yes, I do have a website. It's annafour, the number four, misd.com. And you can get to my Facebook and my Instagram account from there. And Anna is with one N, A-N-A, the number four, misd.com.
Anna four, M-I-S-D, A-N-A, the number four, misd.com is the website. And again, they can get to your socia's through your website.
Yeah, the logo to each are there.
In the couple of minutes that we have left, is there anything that you thought that we were going to ask that we didn't ask? And what would the answer to that be?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question.
That's why I'm the host.
You are a great host. No, I think, I think you asked really great questions. I think all I would say is that I am just committed to this community. I am committed to all students in every corner of this district, all of our educators, all of our staff. We have been so lucky with the teachers and administrators and campuses that we've gotten to be on, and I'm just looking forward to meeting more and more as I get to be out here more on this campaign trail. I'm looking forward to meeting more of the community and more parents, and I'm just, I consider myself very lucky to be able to even have this experience. And I just want to thank you guys for letting me be here and have this opportunity.
I thoroughly enjoyed it, so thank you for being here.
Anna four, misd.com, A-N-A, the number four, misd.com. Anna Alicia Horn, good luck on May 3rd.
Thank you so much.
Coming up next week on About Mansfield, our candidate series continues, and we will talk in studio with school board candidate Jason Thomas. In the meantime, this is the place where you'll hear the latest Mansfield news, talk, and information. Until then, don't forget to like, follow, subscribe, engage, connect, amplify, elevate, celebrate, embrace, explore, share, love, or support this podcast. If you haven't already, so you never miss an episode, it's free and it's easy. Head on over to our website, aboutmansfield.com, right there on the homepage. Enter your email address. We will never, ever, 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 ever send you any spam. We promise.
About Mansfield is recorded at Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio. Hosts, Steve Casio and Colleen Daniel. Moment with the Mayor feature, Michael Evans. Methodist Mansfield News to Know, Angel Beassadi. Cultural Arts Calendar, Tim Roberts. Cocktail of the Week, Brian Certain. Post-production, editing, mixing, and mastering, Steve Casio and Andrew Minor.
This podcast is copyrighted by Podcast Mansfield Recording Studio and is intended for the private use of our audience. Any other use of this podcast without prior written consent is strictly prohibited. We thank you all for listening on behalf of the entire news team. I'm Steve Casio, and this is About Mansfield.